Now, following the ending of the Carvey County Board of Commissioners' order, please rise for a moment of silence, prayer, and pledging of allegiance.
Father, I pray for those who are hurting or lonely today, that you will comfort them. I pray for those who are ill, that you will heal them. I pray for those who are concerned about what may come in the next uncertain hours, that you will grant them peace as they trust you. While it is foolish to worry about tomorrow, it is wise to repair our thoughts and emotions for the next day. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of these minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held May 25, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business at this time?
Good morning. I'm Edith Lukasiewicz. I am the mother of Commissioner Lukasiewicz, and I resent what you have to say with regards to Mr. Lukasiewicz as a county commissioner. I think he has done a wonderful, wonderful job, and Wayne, for you to put him down in such a manner, shame on you, shame on you, Wayne, and I will never, ever support you again for anything for what you put me through right now with what you're accusing him of being a very, very bad commissioner. You have one of the best commissioners that ever served on this board, other than Hakee Walker, and I do not appreciate the comments that you made with regards to Mr. Lukasiewicz. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lukasiewicz, and I can understand your feelings. Any other guests? Leslie?
This is regarding to the personory system, the new Tyler Odyssey. I work with the settlement or subsidiary of McGrip Insurance. We deal with title insurance industry. I'm working on a transaction here in Carvey County that has to involve a foreclosure, and when we, my searcher reported back that there was nothing on my seller, that's interesting because it's, you know, there's $250,000, you know, foreclosure against this property that I'm trying to get cleared, and there was no information on. Only through extra research was I able to find this information. When I contacted my underwriter, they said, hey, we've been in touch with Pennsylvania Land Title Association. They're aware of this situation here in Carvey County. However, we still don't have a resolution. We're going on two months now, and, you know, my counsel has informed me, get a bond. Well, a bond is only as good as the paper it's written on. And this deal, I have a $250,000 liability against me that I can't get the information at the county level. And it's because of the formatting and the way the search works on that system. Wayne, you know, I'm an IT guy, so I know what they're dealing with, and I understand there's some situations behind that. But after two months, there should have been some type of resolution for this system, and it's creating a burden on my company that I have to assume a $250,000 risk when I should be able to go to the courthouse and get the information I need and get my information clear.
Leslie, would you like to make some comment?
Hi, I'm Leslie Salt. I've been a title searcher here at the county for 35 years. Since we have gotten a Tyler Odyssey system on April 14th of this year, the following problems have been occurring. You're unable to run simple names like Brian Smith. You're unable to run numbers, such as a lot of trust companies go by 197 something. You can't run them. If it's got an initial like T, period, L, period, RILITY, you can't run it. Some estates don't show up in the Odyssey system at all. So when we do bring downs for closings, we will find that we have a list of liens, but when we go into the Odyssey system, they're not there. The old system is the way we've been double-checking things, at least up till six weeks ago. Now that system seems to be up some days and down some days. I have no confidence in my work because I can't verify properly. I have notified Karen and the administration as I was told to. I've been notifying you, Wayne. We still have no answers. You said that we have to use this system for two years. This system is inadequate. I'm not confident in my work, you know, when I send these off. So I have to write in objections in my searches stating what did not, what I was not able to run. Now, the state of Pennsylvania says that Title 42 of the Pennsylvania Consolidated Statues says that county offices are provide adequate information. Well, this is not adequate.
Ms. Roberti?
My name's Jennifer Roberti, and I work for Paramount Abstract, again, a title company for real estate. Most of our clients, obviously, are private individuals, either buying or selling property. We've had issues since Tyler Odyssey, obviously, has been put into place in agreement with Leslie and other searchers that do this kind of work. You know, we try to do the best that we can. We always had confidence in the old system. The new system's falling short. An example, a search that I had done in March had provided all kinds of report. There was a municipal lien on that property. It takes a few weeks sometimes till things actually go to closing. I had to do what's called a bring down, which is just verifying everything that's on there prior to closing, prior to the settlement. And it just so happens that my company, my current owner is a company, tried to run it in the new system. Nothing had shown. Reached out, tried to do different avenues on finding that same municipal lien. It did not appear. Went in to see Kelly Salt, who works for Personory for probably over 25 years or so. She also put the information in. It came up, nothing. She just happened to say, do you have a case number? I put the case number in, and it came up that it was still open. So obviously, it's more on Tyler Technologies than what it is on the people that are using it. So there just should be some kind of resolution.
Karen, did you want to say anything aside from?
Unfortunately, I put in a ticket from the very beginning with Tyler Technologies, and we're waiting on them. There's nothing further that I can do. I hear from Leslie multiple times a day, and every time she submits something to me, I reported, committed to Tyler for them to add to the ticket. We're just not getting anywhere with them. The last email that we got from them was, hey, here's this software that you can buy that works better, but we've already spent the money on the product that we purchased. Why should we invest more money in something else that you're saying will work, but you said portal will work, and it's not working? So unfortunately, our hands are tied, and I understand their challenges that they're having, and it's not just them. I mean, I get multiple phone calls a day from various individuals.
What I would suggest, if we could set up a meeting with the Realtors, title searchers, and with Tyler, and of course, we want our solicitor there, et cetera, and you, Karen, and express our dissatisfaction with the program, with the service, with the answers. We all know we've been having problems since we awarded the contract, and we need to be very firm with Tyler that we want answers. We want it fixed, and we want it fixed now. This has been going on long enough, and I appreciate Leslie getting those things to me, and I apologize to the other two commissioners for not forwarding them, and, you know, I just assumed they were copied. They were not. But I would appreciate any other title searchers to put it in writing and get it to us, and we'll try to set up a meeting with Tyler and say, enough is enough. We want this fixed.
And like Wayne said, I wasn't aware of this. I mean, I know that we had problems, and this is a situation. I mean, you come in here, and you give somebody title, and they build a house on that property, and it's not their property? That's a problem. And I see where your issue is. I mean, it's gonna, you know, you're gonna look like the bad person, not the system. And I said, we keep paying these people and paying them, and it gotta stop, you know? Stop payment and fix it. That's the only fix to it. You know, we gotta stop paying them. And this is bad. I mean, I've seen people get in situations that did actually build houses on property that wasn't theirs. It was cleared, but technically it wasn't theirs. So, I mean, this, I mean, this is serious. It's not, I mean, this is, I mean, this could be something, and the people don't find it out until five years later when they sell the house. That's when the problem is. They think they got it great. They build a nice house, and they want to move on to another one, a bigger house, and they go to sellers, and they can't sell it because there's a lien on it, and they never knew that, you know? So the consumer is the one that's really gonna hurt. I mean, it's gonna make you look bad, you know, as the person looking into it, but they're really gonna be in a bad situation. I mean, they could have purchased the house someplace else and relied on this one being sold, and they're stuck. They could go bankrupt in a minute.
Okay.
Are the mortgage companies raising concerns and issues with notes that you have to make on your searches?
Yeah. The transaction I'm working on is being financed by Truist Bank. They won't accept the exception. That's why we have to do the bond identity. That's why we have to assume the risk, and, you know, I'm putting my company's reputation on the line.
Yes, Ms. One of the title searchers, any comments?
Yeah, I am. I don't know what was said previous, but as title searchers were required to have title insurance, I don't know if that was covered. So if we're performing a search, and I type up the name Miller John, and I found, no results found, and there's an IRS lien for $58,000, and it closes, and three months down the road, there's a claim filed against me, and that affects my E and O insurance that I have to carry. So we can't perform searches and be held liable for the companies that we work for and then be held responsible for this new portal system.
Jane?
Yes.
Do you have all your names?
Okay.
Michael Salt, S-O-L-T.
Judy Martin? Linda Fiorella. It's F-I-O-R-I-L-L-A. I forgot Leslie.
In general.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more regarding the Tyler issue? Any other guests? Yes, Leslie?
I was just wondering if we could have a day sheet of what's recorded in the Personory.
A daily sheet?
A daily sheet.
Oh.
But again, it's more work on the Personory or clerk de court or register of wills, but since, you know, for the last six weeks, we have such inadequate docketing that maybe we could have a day sheet. So we had to double check. And also, could we keep the old system up instead of?
I agree.
That maybe we have a double check?
I have to check with Becky on keeping the old system up, but I can provide an electronic report of every new case that's filed in the Personory's office via email. It'll come to you at 6:00 at night. It'll be all the cases that are filed that evening. We're running that report currently for internal staff.
Some kind of a double-check system for us.
Right.
That would be great.
We'll try to work and get that rectified with the, it's always very hard.
I have one more example to make if I can. I completed a search with the old system, and I had 10 municipal liens, and I had an estate. My client sent me a bring down request prior to closing, so I printed out my cover sheet from when I did the prior search. 10 open municipal liens. I went to do my bring down, and it came back, nothing found on record. And I had 10 open municipal liens. My estate didn't show up. Then when it was rectified, I finally found it. There was a claim filed against the estate. So it's, you know, we're putting a lot at risk for us professionally and financially.
Okay.
We know when will the Anita be closed down, because I also, of course, I've had issues with old judgments not appearing in the portal. We keep going back to Anita, find them for satisfying those judgments when a docket is paid in full. As soon as I get an answer from Becky, I'll let you know as well.
Any more in the Tyler system? Any other guests concerning county business? But we will try to get that scheduled.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. No further guests, if you want.
Next item is the proclamation for Child Welfare Professionals Week, June 5th through the 9th, 2023.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes. If you will, Miss, as you're solicitor.
Certainly. Whereas, the week of June 5th through the 9th, 2023, has been proclaimed as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week by Governor Wolf, recognizing the efforts of child welfare professionals serving the children of Pennsylvania. And whereas, every day in Carbon County, local children are at risk of child abuse and neglect. Some have been removed from their homes due to such abuse and neglect. And we, the commissioners of Carbon County, recognize the risks and the need to intervene to protect the children of this county. And whereas, the challenging tasks of investigating child abuse, providing service to families, assessing safety, and providing services are critically necessary to ensure the children of Carbon County are provided with the nurturance, family connections, and support as they transition into adulthood. Services that allow a child to remain safely in their home or return home as expeditiously as possible falls to the professionals of Carbon County Children and Youth. And whereas, the work of these dedicated professionals may require them to enter into situations in which their personal safety may be put at risk, and yet they continue to conduct investigations and work with families in their homes at great risk to their own health. And whereas, child welfare professionals work in difficult and emotional situations with children who have been victimized by physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and other forms of maltreatment. And whereas, the professionals of Carbon County Children and Youth Services must develop great skill in working with families who are in crisis situations, struggling with mental health challenges, and suffering from drug and alcohol afflictions, poverty, and other difficult issues. And whereas, the professionals of Carbon County Children and Youth Services must develop substantial knowledge and skills surrounding the rights of families, the laws surrounding child welfare, and the legal processes governing the system. And whereas, the staff of Carbon County Children and Youth Services selflessly endeavor to protect Pennsylvania's children, often with low pay, long hours, tremendous demands, little appreciation, great criticism, and with dramatic impacts to their personal lives. And whereas, every year, children, child welfare professionals are injured or killed in their pursuit of the protection of children across the United States. And whereas, the lasting effects of the COVID-19 pandemic has created substantial challenges in the recruitment and retention of staff of child welfare agencies while the workload has not decreased. And whereas, the innumerable injuries and deaths of children in Carbon County have been averted due to the efforts of Carbon County Children and Youth Services. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Carbon County hereby adopt this proclamation, recognizing the staff of Carbon County Children and Youth Services for their efforts and dedication in protecting the children of Carbon County. Signed this first day of June 2023, the Carbon County Board of Commissioners.
And I'm just gonna throw my report in here. Children and youth will be moving to Lee Heighton 525 Monday. I think it's a long time coming, and I think they're all happy about it, and they can't wait. But I think, I think this fits with, and I think if everybody reads the proclamation, it sees what their job consists of and what they have to deal with every day. For them to move to this, for them to have a building that they have space to work, room to have people come in, I think that's one of the biggest accomplishments that we did here at the county. I think I'm very proud of where you've got to, and we did lose some people on the way, but I think this is one way of keeping our people. So good luck on Monday. I'm gonna go with the sheriff tomorrow and try to work a little of the safety details out, and Monday, get ready. Get your boxes ready because the drunk will be here at 7:00.
Again, as always, I thank the people and children and youth having such a difficult job, the environment they get into, the people they have to deal with, the people not understanding the laws and think that you have to do this, you have to do that. But just since the Penn State issue, what, 30-some pieces of legislations that have changed major job extremely more difficult. You have a tough decision. Do you remove a child from a home? Don't you remove a child from a home? And it could greatly affect the financial status of the South County if you make a decision. You are to be commended for the outstanding work you do, and I know recently, you tried to do a breakfast meet and greet type thing with the police department. Unfortunately, not all officers can make it. A lot were on duty or in court or whatever, but the police officers that I talked to were all appreciative of what you do and how you help them. When they get into these situations, they come out, or you come out right away and are there to assist them, advise them, and vice versa. I think you work very well with the police, and you get to know on a first-name basis because you deal with them so often. But thank you very much, and please convey that to the, all your employees. You're greatly appreciated, and we hope you enjoy your new home, so.
And I want to add on this again, too, but even, we had a situation a couple weeks ago, Jill, that people thought children and youth was not doing their job, and I can tell you, they are. There's certain things that they can't tell you. I mean, if a child is going to a safe place or whatever, we don't know what, if the DA's involved in it, is the police department. So when somebody says to me that they're not doing their job, I would have to say they're wrong because they haven't proven it. I mean, these people work hard, and I said, we were on that phone call at 10:00 at night, and the person that brought this up, it was brought to their attention, and we just couldn't tell them what the situation was. And people, that's what I said, people got to realize that there are things, and the children are being taken care of, even though you don't think they are. So I think that was, that was, I think that was one of the worst things that was a couple weeks ago that happened, you know? And to a person to say that to me in their position, I don't think that was warranted, but it was straight now.
Jill, unquestionably, this board has done everything it's can to mitigate, reduce any internal obstacles to you and your team doing your job. And we do recognize the significant challenges you have, but you have maximized the tools and resources that you all have available to you. And I don't think anyone could ever question the value that you bring and your team brings to the lives of children, mostly those who are under threat of abuse or being abused, and to the families. So thank you for all you do and what your team does, and this is a due recognition for that commitment that is sometimes and often not shown much gratitude towards. So thank you.
Jill, would you like to come up and make any comments or make me see it? Well, it's not like we're live streaming because of the internet issue today.
I wanted to present Jackie Henry, who's in our child abuse investigation unit, and Samantha Rex, who's been in all of our units, but now currently in our placement unit. They are the best of the best. They're all great staff here, and I just wanted to recognize them and let them accept the proclamation from the commissioners. That would be okay.
Well, one other thing. Why don't you tell a little bit about the amount of case loads you have coming in, intakes, et cetera?
So last year, we had 1,700 reports coming in on child abuse and neglect, some of them very serious. Luckily, we had no fatalities, one fatality this year. It's a combination of a lot of things from COVID, as was said in the proclamation, where mental health is truly an issue that is constantly brought up. It's something that everyone, it touches everyone, from parents to children, and we certainly try to focus our efforts on making sure that families have what they need. Our budget, we increased by $2 million. Part of that is the prevention services. So the Family First Prevention Act was put into place, and we're putting a lot of money into prevention, getting services in the home before there's an issue, before there's an accident, before there's abuse, before the parents are not able to control the situation. And then the other part of the building is also, you know, something that we needed. We needed, we needed to expand our space, have the ability to have more families coming in to visit their children, and we also increased our placement numbers quite a bit. Since I became administrator three years ago, about 79% went up because we were making sure that children were safe and removing those children who were not, placing them into foster care. We enhanced our foster care, and we have 45% of our children are in relative care. We've been keeping up with the other counties, and we're in the top 15% as far as keeping kids with family. Our adoptions have also gone up. When I started, there was one adoption pending. Now we have 10 adoptions pending, so those children are finding their forever homes. And all this work is done from the minute that we get a report coming in the door to the minute we sign that adoption paperwork. And these, my staff, these caseworkers are the ones that do all that work. So I want to thank them today. One of the quotes I found that I really liked was that casework is the art of listening and the science of hope, and I know that these staff certainly have that.
Okay.
Thank you, Salt. Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Can you get around there?
Yeah, bring him back.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you guys can come back here.
They can sit here if they want.
I don't move up. Yes, thank you. I'll go around.
There you go. That's okay. There's not a move. It is like.
Do I want to get in?
Thank you. Go on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, lady.
Next item is the Report of Executive Sessions Held. The department reports the budget transfers.
Motion. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. At this time, I'm asking the board to entertain a motion to amend the agenda regarding expenditures.
Motion amended. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
Expenditures, approval of check numbers, 236636 through 236729. For expenditures to the general fund clearing account, this will change the general fund amount to $198,370.68 and changing the total to $1,196,908.37.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes.
The Treasuries report?
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Knostein?
Yes. This time, we'll recess the commissioners' meeting and reconvene our Carvey Salary Board meeting to work. Are there any guests concerning county board business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
The Report of Executive Sessions Held.
There's one executive session held on May 30th, 2023, at 8:30 a.m.
Our next item is courts. Judge Madigan?
I have two motions, both with respect to Madam Schloss's office. The first is to change the rate of one-off supervisor on.
Yeah, I did.
Kimberly Howser, I'm sorry, would be promoted to that position, and with respect to her position, it would be Susan Joyce promoted to that position. We've already dealt with the office manager in the first motion. The second motion now is to officially have Susan Joyce to have her amount adjusted to what it was before.
An adjustment of one step down from what's being suggested, for example, in this case, from a B to an A, would still give this individual an increase. It wouldn't be as much as being requested, but it would be an increase. We're going back to being subjective versus objective and really dealing more with persons or personalities versus what is in the best interest of future requests of this type. Again, we're setting a precedence where everyone should definitely have a dollar raise, which the court has argued before has been past practice. But again, it doesn't make a sense necessarily to do this. And again, I think they do deserve an increase. They are getting an increase, but just not in the amount that is requested.
The thing I would say was, this person has several years' experience in the office.
Yeah.
I think she's been there since two thousand sixteen, November two thousand sixteen. So I believe if I understand correctly, I made the motion, I believe, Commissioner Honor has seconded.
And I just want to go back on my comment again. I think job descriptions are very important, and I think what we looked at before, even with what the courts presented before, we had, was it Court, remember the Court, what was that, the Court Coordinator? Like actually, the Court presented, I think it was eighteen ninety-nine, and when we went through the study, it actually went over nineteen, it went nineteen twenty-three. And even with ours here, if everybody's seen it, last week, we hired somebody in our purchasing department, and they went through the proper channels, and they actually wound up, it's going to wind up, that person is getting a three-dollar raise. And I'm not grudging anybody a raise, and if this is what it's going to come to, but I think sometimes when you come in and don't do the research, you could be even shortchanging these people, you know, and that's my point. I think there's a system to go through, and if this is what you're suggesting, this is what I guess is going to be done for the courts. I mean, the courts has been doing a little bit different than all the other departments that has been, so.
Can I call for a vote? Judge Nanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sivertak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
No.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Those are the motions I have. Thank you very much.
Next item is elections. Establish the position of one voter registration specialist at seventeen dollars, ninety-one cents per hour, grade two, step L, effective June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make that motion with some discussion on this also. And I think this is an altogether different situation here, and this is one of the things that elections, that I seen and said last year, that we should have redone the whole department. And this is actually a change of classification that this person has there. This person had duties before, you know, and this has changed. I mean, everybody has seen how elections has changed, and you can see it. This is basically the same person, and this person is getting an eighty-six cent raise, you know, where they got nothing through, you know, the salary study. And that's what I said, it's like, if we go through the proper channels, people will get the salary that they deserve. Simple as that.
I think Commissioner Honor, this reinforces what our position has been for about a handful of positions. They would be reexamined at an appropriate time. This has gone through the process. HR has reviewed the position, made the recommendation to increase it to this level.
Okay. Call for the vote? Mr. Sivertak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Those are the motions I have. Thank you very much.
Next item is elections. Establish the position of one voter registration specialist at seventeen dollars, ninety-one cents per hour, grade two, step L, effective June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make that motion with some discussion on this also. And I think this is an altogether different situation here, and this is one of the things that elections, that I seen and said last year, that we should have redone the whole department. And this is actually a change of classification that this person has there. This person had duties before, you know, and this has changed. I mean, everybody has seen how elections has changed, and you can see it. This is basically the same person, and this person is getting an eighty-six cent raise, you know, where they got nothing through, you know, the salary study. And that's what I said, it's like, if we go through the proper channels, people will get the salary that they deserve. Simple as that.
I think Commissioner Honor, this reinforces what our position has been for about a handful of positions. They would be reexamined at an appropriate time. This has gone through the process. HR has reviewed the position, made the recommendation to increase it to this level.
Okay. Call for the vote? Mr. Sivertak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Abolish the position of one department clerk, three, at seventeen dollars and five cents per hour, a grade two, step J, effective June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion abolished, second.
Mr. Sivertak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Abolish the position of one department clerk, three, at seventeen dollars and five cents per hour, a grade two, step J, effective June fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion abolished, second.
Mr. Sivertak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the salary board meeting till June eighth, twenty twenty-three, during the, which will convene during the commissioners meeting. Now reconvene the commissioners meeting.
The next item is the personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and rural offices.
Motion acknowledged, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed. Copies will be made available to the press upon request. Boards and authorities, Animal Shelter Advisory Commission. For acceptance, a letter was received from Terry Mayer submitting her resignation from the Carbon County Animal Shelter Advisory Commission, effective May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to accept, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Children and youth, for approval, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four purchase of service agreement submitted for George Junior Republic in Pennsylvania of Grove City, PA, as per the attached rates.
Motion approved, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Information technology, for approval and execution, quotation was received from Integra One of Allentown, Pennsylvania, to purchase a multi-factor authentication system. Token, fifty tokens at a cost of six thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and four cents, a one-year service agreement for two thousand forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents, and Integra One professional services at a cost of thirty-eight hundred dollars, for a total of twelve thousand three hundred forty dollars, ninety-one cents. These are under Co-Stars Hardware zero-zero-three dash E twenty-two dash five eighty and software dash zero-zero-six dash E twenty-three dash two fifty-two.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
The solicitors report?
Thank you. Under courts, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a contract with Maria Hoskins of Kingston, Pennsylvania, court reporter, establishing a per diem court reporting services rate for stenographic services for the court of common pleas on an as-needed basis. Half-day, up to three hours, one hundred seventy-five dollars; full-day, up to eight hours, three hundred fifty dollars, and hours over eight billed at fifty dollars an hour.
Motion approved and executed, and I do have, I mean, it has a second. And is this, I know we had a discussion last week, a person has leave. Is this to fill in for that person, or I don't, you know, like, it's not?
No, it's not. We have per diem court reporters that we call if someone's sick.
Yeah, I know.
We have extra hearings with senior judges, so this is just a contract with this individual so that she can fill in if we need her.
Because I know I seen on the billing, like, a couple of weeks ago, there was a billing for something, I think it was one of the court cases, so that's similar to this then?
Yes.
Well, listen, Sharon, isn't it logical to assume if we send a court stenographer on leave of absence to trial, run another job, there will be more demand for this individual? Seems a logical sequence of events.
Not necessarily.
Right.
For example, our upcoming trials, we're only going to hold trials for the two court reporters that we have. We have several trials, but we're going to continue one so that we only use the court reporters we have.
Okay.
So, no, we're trying to reduce that within our courts.
Okay.
Okay?
Any further discussion? May I pull the board? Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Next, for the correctional facility, they're seeking a motion for approval and execution of an agreement with Johnson Controls Fire Protection Limited Partnership of Allentown, Pennsylvania, to supply and replace three fire alarms located at the correctional facility at a total cost of four thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars, three cents.
Motion approved and executed.
Second on discussion, I believe Johnson Controls is working our panic system, and so far, they failed to deliver on that contractual obligation. So I'm questioning our logic of continuing to go down this path of awarding them more work until they complete significant work that's already in progress and should already be implemented and be operational. You know, again, it's, you know, I understand the importance of this, but, you know.
One of the things, this is a different department of Johnson Controls. This is a proprietary system. I understand what you're saying, and Johnson Controls is certainly a huge expense in a county, and I think Ms. Honor has some comments.
Johnson Controls did their inspection of the fire alarm system, and there were three items that were found to be deficient. So their inspection agreement does not include repairs.
Right.
Okay, so this is to repair the three deficient items.
In addition, you know, and the other is a critical issue as well, is the safety, life safety issue as well as the freedom. It's one of these things that we have to vote on all the time, that, you know, you don't have much of a choice. You get it fixed, or you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Okay?
Can I pull the board? Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
For Mock Chunk Lake Park, seeking a motion for approval and execution of a special activities agreement for the Slay Nation Fishing Kayak Tournament, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, pending approval by the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission.
Move to approve and execute, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
And for the open space advisory board, seeking a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero-one-nine to establish the Carbon County Open Space Advisory Board.
Move to establish, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
Next, I'll call for a motion to amend the next agenda item for the correction of drafting error on my part within the resolution, having to do with the appointment of the Carbon County Agricultural Land Preservation Board representative.
Move to modify, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes.
And with that, seeking a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero-two-zero, authorizing the Carbon County Commissioners to appoint six directors and two alternates to the advisory board for terms not to exceed three years, in addition to an appointment by the Carbon County Agricultural Land Preservation Board.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtine?
Yes, just a clarification there. Under the D forty amendment, the chair of the egg committee would automatically be on there, where we decided to let it up to the preservation board to make that recommendation for.
And lastly, I think, again, Mock Chunk Lake Park, seeking a motion for approval to enter into a revenue support agreement with the Lehigh and North Hampton Transportation Authority, or LANTA, to implement a Mock Chunk Lake Park beach bus route that will serve the communities of Jim Thorpe, Lansford, Summit Hill, and Nescua Honing on ten consecutive Saturdays commencing July one, two thousand twenty-three, and concluding September second, two thousand twenty-three Labor Day weekend. The cost of the service prior to fare collections and other potential revenue generating offsets is two thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty cents.
Move to approve. And I'll second that with a little bit of discussion here. I mean, we've been going over this for a while, and I just look at this agreement, it is a public transportation that anyone can get on and off. This is not a bus to the park, it's a bus to anywhere. We have no way to know that the child gets to the park, and if they get there and there's no lifeguard on duty, we're making the decision for the child to swim at their own risk. We're a founding member of P-COR since, I think it's nineteen eighty-eight, or it's nineteen eighty-one, eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-seven, and that's a consortium that's joined counties together to reduce insurance costs. We're putting our membership at risk, and we were already told that there's provisions that are not covered under this plan. If this is for a family used for the park for quality time, then make it family to the park. Then you have an adult to oversee. As for now, this issue has to be put to rest. This tabling and tabling is not working for me. I don't see any provisions that any child will reach the park destination safely. That's all I have to say.
I think there's no question. LANTA, Carbon Transit, has proven itself extremely safe in its operation, so I have no question about the ability for Carbon Transit, AKA LANTA, who manages that, to safely transport any citizen of Carbon County to Mock Chunk Lake Park. Also, extremely confident, having spent the last three years of summer Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays, with very few exceptions, visiting Mock Chunk Lake Park, the beach specifically, and observing the rangers patrolling the beach, the lifeguards observing the swim area, that all citizens and guests of Carbon County have an extremely safe outdoor recreational environment in which to enjoy. Anything less than accepting of this summer Saturday's bus route that includes Mock Chunk Lake Park significantly adversely impacts the citizens of Nescua Honing, Summit Hill, Lansford, and Jim Thorpe, and specifically those of low to moderate income, who unlike the three of us earn seventy-seven thousand dollars a year, drive forty, fifty thousand dollar shiny vehicles that you see parked out front, don't have low-cost, affordable transportation to Mock Chunk Lake Park, be it a senior citizen, a family, or a teenager. What age, I ask, is appropriate for someone to get on a bus and go to Mock Chunk Lake Park? What age is appropriate for someone to walk to the Lehighton Pool, the Palmerton Pool, Yourana Pond up in Weatherly? It's all well below twelve years of age. Hasn't been an issue or concern. At ten o'clock this morning, I had a call from P-COR, who said they would provide us some recommendations in regards to risk mitigation. The individual who replaced John Salade, who we know very well from many years working with the county, they were not comfortable delving in to the operational procedures of Mock Chunk Lake Park and would not be submitting recommendations at this time in regards to how we operate Mock Chunk Lake Park. We remain fully covered, we have appropriate levels of protection to cover any potential liabilities that could be foreseen. to cover any potential liabilities that could be foreseen. That's all I have on this.
I'm just concerned at the age, in what age are the buses going to, or Lanta going to allow people to ride alone and to be dropped off at the lake? We are not a babysitter. I do think twelve is too young, fourteen is okay. But when you talk about the swimming pools in the area, we're talking two different things here. We're talking where you can see the bottom, you know, the pools, et cetera. It's a lot smaller area. You have the three area, most likely three lifeguards around that swimming area for these people. And I just have a concern with the age of these people dropped off. I'm also concerned about if P Corp doesn't want to give us, or doesn't want to make comments. And with our meeting with them, they have great concern over this. And I'm just concerned that, and interested really, in see how many people are going to take advantage of this, whether you're right or not. But give me an answer on what is the appropriate age? I think twelve is too young to be left alone at a lake. We're not babysitters. And it's very difficult to, you know, for our lifeguards to, you know, really watch everyone in the water. It's not like it waters clear, as I said, so.
We're all, Commissioner Nolstein, we're already watching children under twelve at Mock Chunk Lake Park. No, the, the, the children walk down from the campsites and enjoy themselves in the water without adult supervision. You can observe it on any day at Mock Chunk Lake Park when, when there are campers there. We just recently increased what we say is the, the age requiring supervision at Mock Chunk Lake Park to twelve. Likewise, Lanta agreed to increase their ridership minimum age in Carbon County to twelve, understanding throughout the rest of their system that age is significantly lower. In regards to comparing a swimming pool such as Palmerton and Leighton to Mock Chunk Lake Park, if you visit those two pools on any warm summer day, the density of individuals per square meter, per square yard is significantly higher. So while you don't, higher than Mock Chunk Lake Park. So while you may have clear bottoms, you have a higher density of people. Whereas at Mock Chunk Lake Park, there is less density. Not saying that totally offsets the risk. But again, we've taken appropriate measures to ensure our lifeguards are certified, trained, retrained, hiring of the lifeguard supervisor, who not only works scheduling, but also to ensure that, unlike in seasons past, when a lifeguard first comes to the beach on their first tour of duty or, or work, they're not simply not going to have refresher training or continual training throughout the summer. So again, we've taken appropriate steps to further mitigate the risk out there. Matter of fact, we've never had an incident of a drowning of a twelve-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, a fourteen-year-old, a fifteen-year-old, or a sixteen-year-old at Mock Chunk Lake Park.
I could just say about the density as you speak with the pools where you can see, with that density, there's far less chance of a drowning because the others in the water as well. Okay, no further discussion for me.
No, good.
May I pull the board?
Here.
Mr. Honor?
No.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
The only reason I will support it at this point in time, not that I like it, but I want to see what the ridership is in these next three months. If people are going to take advantage of it or not. I know transportation in this county is a, a major issue. It's a hard one to solve. But, you know, unless we try this, not, I wish I could just exclude the park, the swimming area on this, but in order to find out what kind of ridership is it worth investment of further, you know, further transportation opportunities, so I will vote yes.
If I could just add, look, expectation management, those fourteen seats aren't going to be filled on these buses, right? We know it takes years to build up a clientele, you know? So again, let's go forth, let's see what happens. I know Lanta, Carbon Transit, Carbon Chamber, JTTA are going to make a concerted effort to push this not only to residents of Carbon County, but also to visitors who want to go from downtown or from Jim Thorpe, the Opera House, up to Mock Chunk Lake will now be afforded that opportunity. Yeah.
Next, any further business?
Yeah, I just want to apologize for checking my emails or text messages. I'm waiting for an update from P, and tell data on the internet how he's right now. So still waiting to hear when we're going to have our internet restored there here and to our county offices. It really puts a strain on all of us here, so. I'll have, in the form of business.
Commissioners reports, Mr. Honor?
I do have one other thing. I actually did talk to P Corp yesterday about our administration building. They did give us the okay to move forward with our work that has to be done here. So we're going to have to sit down and have a giant discussion, and I think there was a little discrepancy over the overtime. But they said that what, that maximum that they put in, they will pay out to that maximum because we are a seven or a five-day-a-week operation, and there's no way somebody can come in and work on the ceiling while people are working there. So it's probably going to wind up being nights and weekends, and it'll probably wind up being that, what was it, two hundred and thirty, whatever it was, two hundred and thirty thousand. And, and they're, they, that's fine with them. So we have to, I have to call CMG this afternoon, who will be the contractor that's going to be doing it. And we just have to move forward for them and see when they can do it. And then we'll have to sit down and how they're going to do it. So once I get a date, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks I could start on it. And it probably looks like it could be like a three to four week operation. And that's all I have.
Mr. Lukasovich?
Yeah, a couple of things. First and foremost, the election board did certify the election results, and the department aspires to get the official results uploaded as soon as our internet connectivity is reestablished. In regards to the multi-factor authentication motion that passed, I want to thank our IT department for going back, doing a thorough analysis, reassessment of this particular system, and they assure us it's the right system at, at the right time to increase our, our cyber security. So I appreciate the effort that they put into this to take this program forward. Last week, Mr. Nolstein made some unsubstantiated accusations to which I decided at that moment, in an uncustomary fashion for me, to kind of bite my tongue and not respond immediately. But the fact is, you know, he appears to have gone on the campaign trail against the non-candidate, quite frankly. He implied that I alone was responsible for the departure of three to six department heads due to their treatment. The facts are, I only recall three department heads that have left in the last year. Elections, purchasing, and HR, two who publicly stated salary and thus a sense, in their mind, of not being appreciated, and specifically referring to myself and my colleague, Commissioner Harn. The HR director left for reasons not at all associated with the accusations presented by Mr. Nolstein. Interesting, one of these individuals is already politicking to return to county employment in January twenty twenty-three. Mr. Nolstein fails to recall the actions by the Board of Commissioners required the support of two commissioners, yet he decided to direct his comments only at me. I have broad shoulders that can bear the burden of my decisions and politically motivated accusations of a defamatory nature. With that said, I was proud to stand shoulder to shoulder with Commissioner Harn in supporting the findings of the salary study and not placing my popularity over doing what is in the best interest of all county employees, and specifically though in the lower tier of earnings, and of course, in the best interest of the taxpayers of Carbon County. Mr. Nolstein went on to talk about intimidation. Look, I'm a mere five foot eleven and a hundred and eighty-five pounds, so I know it's not my physical prowess that intimidates. What I suspect he meant was I intimidate folks as a result of my constant display of passionate confidence that comes from the application of my American taxpayer-funded global education, training, leadership opportunities, my research and preparation for everything I do. Well, if so or otherwise, I have no time for the insecurities of a few. I'm too busy focusing my time and energy on what is best for the remaining sixty-four thousand-plus residents of the county. Bear in mind, every resident, every county employee had the same opportunity I did as a seventeen-year-old to walk into that recruiting station at one ninety-seven South First Street in Leighton and start down a path of extremely challenging self-improvement that built the capacity to not feel intimidated by others and to speak truthfully, candidly, persuasively, impassionately, in a selfless effort to serve others. Mr. Nolstein then spoke about micromanagement of advisory boards that is resultant from my presence at their meetings, primarily as an observer. He mentions board or commission members resigning. I'd really like to know the names of those individuals. I know the Animal Shelter Advisory Commission chairs stepped down. Beyond that, I'm not familiar with other members, and I know specifically why both Frank and Terry stepped down. And my name was not mentioned. Four boards, commissions I have a deep interest in and a physical presence at. Ag land preservation, parks and rec, animal shelter and planning. Nearly every one of these meetings are viewable and livestreamed either on the Commissioners Facebook page or on my C four Commissioner page. I challenge my political enemies to find a moment that could be considered micromanagement. I do absolutely provide input at appropriate times and always clarify in my comments if my comments are simply a sense of the Board of Commissioners position or my personal agenda and position. Do I confidently and passionately push an agenda? Absolutely. Ag land preservation, expanding county residents' investment in farm preservation, my agenda. Parks and rec, prioritizing access opportunities to county residents and providing the highest quality outdoor recreational opportunity to county residents in visits, that's my agenda. Animal shelter, a shelter that thrives and not just survives. With the only realistic path forward to this is a public-private nonprofit partnership, that's my agenda. Planning commission, prevent degradation of our natural environment to include protecting our ridge lines and viewsapes from wind turbines, protecting our open space from solar farms when alternative formerly developed locations are available, and that our comp plans aren't simply suggestions, that's my agenda, and I'll continue to push those agenda items. I challenge anyone to include board or commission members to contest my comments with facts or deny that my presence has not resulted in unequal visibility to their work, nor hasn't measurably advanced their influence to positively serve the interests of the residents of Carbon County to historical highs. And make no mistake, I push them to their tasks. Feel free to call that micromanagement, but without my presence, their opinions, their advisement, their influence would be greatly degraded, and so would suffer the residents of Carbon County because of my, what would be, lack of involvement. Mr. Nolstein declares in the most negative term, term, this county government isn't the military. You're right, Mr. Nolstein, county government is not the military. And let me share with you some aspects of the military that I witnessed in a rise from private to sergeant first class, from second lieutenant to full bird colonel over thirty-four years. That makes one long for a county government that is more like and incorporates the military's best practices, which are more often than not seen in America's most successful companies and organizations. A disciplined work ethic, clear chain of command, effective leadership, teamwork and collaboration, goal-oriented mindset, adaptability, resilience, attention to detail, effective communication, strategic planning and execution, regular performance evaluations, mentoring, information sharing and dissemination, a shared culture, subordinate development, employees who, and leaders who understand the organization's vision and roadmap. Just a few examples why county government needs to be more like the military. While I appreciate your concern with my reputation as a commissioner, I remind you that leadership is not a popularity contest. Unfortunately, you're confusing leadership with one popularity as a career politician and is short-sighted. As to my reputations, the words I hear from other than my political enemies and their ilk, so individuals like them, I'm described passionate, confident, endless energy, deals and facts, moral courage, takes ownership of successes and failures, a fighter, loyal, ethical, beyond reproach. You and folks like you are always on the campaign trail and will always attempt to diminish the reputation of those who threaten your fiefdom, that of your career politicians like yourself. Mr. Nolstein, stop feigning, faking that you are but a career politician who is threatened by change, by positive change that frankly, folks like Rocky and I could bring forth at greater speed if it was not for your presence. Now with the Times News. It seems like the Times News, be it a journalist's decision or an editor's decision, wanted to leave out every single stated justification for the termination of the contract of the election contractor that was stated. Again, might have been running short of column, space, but none the fact. It created a lack of full context to a story and gave no context or understanding to why someone would support not terminating the contract. I continue to look at the statements I listed last week, the graphic on social media from that contractor who I didn't share publicly, but was prepared to as Mr. Nolstein opened the can of worms or Pandora box on, on this matter. I find it reprehensible that the Times News would fail to publish full context of a story. Importantly, in the book, The Elements of Journalism, from Tom Rosenstiel and Bill Kovacs, they write, "The essence of journalism is a discipline of verification." That discipline is described as a scientific-like approach to getting the facts and also the right facts. This is a useful definition of verification. Not one comment that was made was questioned by the Times News, and it continues to be a history of their shortcomings in the profession of journalism. That's all I have.
Mr. Nolstein?
I certainly didn't expect all of that, I expected some. But I would certainly disagree on the one issue about why, how, how many left, because the people aren't going to come up to you and tell you why they left to your face, unfortunately. I wish they would. But at this time, you know, I do want to bring up something on the Carbon County calls on state lawmakers to fund and reauthorize or the nine-one-one funding. Carbon County is proud to provide one of the key functions in public safety, the operation of the nine-one-one call center, call-taking, and dispatch system. However, funding systems no longer align with current realities. Carbon County needs to be able to rely on consistent and sustainable funding to maintain their responsibility as the. and sustainable funding to maintain their responsibility as the first line of emergency response. To do that, Pennsylvania counties are all counting for the, calling for the development of a funding mechanism well ahead of the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four sunset of the state law, also known as Act twelve. That adequately supports current county needs and also ensures the funding sources and distribution supports needs to the end of the future. Carbon County receives about one and a half million dollars annually or the equivalent of one mil tax increase if lost. The evolution of technology comes at a high price and next-gen nine-one-one that includes texts, pictures, videos, which will enable additional forms of communication and new capabilities to meet the needs. Other costs are rising such as personnel, equipment, CAD maintenance upgrades of equipment, and the list goes on. To adequately fund the nine-one-one system, counties are calling for an increase in the nine-one-one surcharge to two dollars and thirty cents with an increase of fifteen cents until the next authorization in five years. With this proposal surcharge rate, counties will provide or continue to provide a level of buy-in to the system without relying on property taxes increases to cover the state share. Included in this funding is support for the nine-one, or nine-eight-eight suicide hotline, which is approximately fifteen percent or of the cost increase. So Carbon County is joining every other county in Pennsylvania in encouraging Shapiro administration and the General Assembly to take immediate action on a five-year reauthorization that allows time to better understand and determine if such a surcharge is still appropriate funding level mechanism as technologies and capabilities involve even a one-day, one-year delay at current funding levels would bump counties to funding nearly thirty-eight percent of the system will grow to forty-six percent in twenty-twenty-seven if the surcharge remains the same. So it's extremely, extremely important that our legislators, our Senate, our governor push the issue and get this resolved by the end of the year. The committees from the Emergency Management, the nine-one-one and the Governor's Office as well have been continuing to meet to come up with legislation to get this act reauthorized. We all know it doesn't happen overnight. Something the county commissioners had started pushing last year already and will continue to push to ensure that this funding is in place. If not, it's going to be a one-mil tax increase just to sustain our upper building. Because technology is changing all the time. And as you've seen almost on a weekly basis here, I would say weekly basis, the increases we have in expenditure because of the cost of living and services, maintenance of the CAD system, electric, et cetera, all going up. So right now, our budget, it varies, maybe about two million dollars up and down depending on what equipment we purchase and investments we may make in trying to improve the communication system. Technologies in the list I have are the expenditure salaries are down a little bit. I know Gary tries to do as much as he can in maintaining a minimum staffing level. It's one of those jobs where things change in a heartbeat. They can go from two dispatchers having nothing to do to six dispatchers not being able to keep up with the load. So I strongly encourage, in particular, our legislators to step up their plate and make this happen before the end of the year. I want to remind people too, we don't even have till the end of January. Because the end of October, we're basically done. I mean, the House and them normally leave for holidays in November and nothing gets done in November, December and January. So we need to ensure that we have an agreeable legislative act written up and passed before the end of October. That's all I have. Meeting adjourned. Thirteen.
I wanted to go back to the Lanta bus situation. I know at previous meeting, there was discussion on checking the kid's age before they get on the bus, maybe a card of some kind. Was there any decision on that front?
Well, Lanta bus has the authority and the right to require ID.
Do we know if they are like if they're going?
Yes, when AJ was here, AJ Jordan, who's planning, he said those individuals who appear to be underage would be asked to provide ID.
And are there any other further steps in discussion at all on just keeping an eye on that? On the age of getting them there and back?
Well, I think we have a Parks and Rec Commission meeting coming forth and they'll be looking at potential steps that the park will take on those occasions, hopefully not many, where we are quote-unquote swim at your own risk and how we deal with that. We are authorized to kind of continue to move people through the park and not allow them entry. But again, it is public transportation. And even Lanta could take the same route without our acceptance. Now, they may have to drop off in a different location, but again, we're just doing it in the safest manner possible. So check with the next meeting, I think the Parks and Rec meeting, you know?
Yeah, it's going to take some time to get some real statistics. To me, I'm not sure if the Saturday and Sunday is the best solution. I'd rather see something during the week. Because the reason for that is a lot of parents are home on weekends. They're not home during the week to get the kids to the lake. Most people, especially the elderly, they can't, those that can't drive or don't have a car, whatever. I think most of their appointments or transportation needs are during the week, in my personal opinion, and not so much on the weekends. You know, and those that don't have cars and families or elderly, you know, maybe there's, they have more access to transportation assistance during the weekend than we would during the week. So I'm not sure, too sure, we're going to get a good, accurate number of people that really would benefit by this type of system.
Is there potential of expanding it to weekdays?
I would, I know I'm just against the late part really, but I think if, and that's the problem with our current system, the lack of ridership. And maybe it's because the routes are not available to everyone. Or people call up and get complaints all the time, well, it's not a taxi service. I mean, if people don't use the system, how can we justify the expense of adding routes in that? So, you know, and I wish I would have said that earlier, that I think it should be, should have been done during the week when the ridership, I would think, would be up.
Well, let me add to that. The concern with during the week is then you're taken away from the opportunity for it to be a family experience, right? That's what we want to do. We don't want a twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old necessarily going by themselves. The community is best served when those individuals who are transportation needy get together and go to Mock Chunk Lake Park as a family unit. If that mother or father is working, you know, a minimum wage job at the Quickie Mart Monday through Friday, right, you don't want, you're not going to be taking them away from that. When do families tend to gather? On weekends. It provides the opportunities for family to come together. So in lieu of sending that twelve-year-old to Mock Chunk Lake Park Monday through Friday for on-tent and purposes babysitting, right? We're not doing that. We're making it convenient for mom and dad, the legal guardian, to accompany their children, their friends' children, whatever the case may be, to Mock Chunk Lake Park. And again, keep in mind, this route is not taking away from the service that is already taking place. It's expanding upon, it's maximizing resources, buses, routes and drivers that are already available but being underutilized. Lanta's excited to anything that would increase their ridership. Increasing their ridership significantly increases the federal money that they receive to enhance services.
And I think what you've seen here, there is really no plan. Your question was, is there a plan? I don't see no plan. You know, when there's a bus, a bus leaves and it has a destination where it goes to the school. There's monitors on the bus. If Lanta has busing in Allentown or Philadelphia, there's a bus driver and a monitor or either, you know, a policeman, there's cameras all over the place. And I still sit on this. And if Landa would want to do this, then let them do it and let them have the liability. We're going to be liable for this. And I go back to it again. We are in jeopardy of losing our insurance over this. Who is going to pay for that if there's a four-million-dollar lawsuit against us? What are we going to do? How much, what would we have to raise? The mills, probably three mills to cover four million dollars? We don't have that expense. And they've already told us that there are provisions within here that do not cover what could happen out there. And they stress that. And I said, I just stand on that and I keep going back to this. There's no plan. And like I said, if Landa wants to do it and they took our business over, okay? If they want to do it and they want to make the money, they ought to start highlighting on the other busing that goes around the county. And now they're trying and he said it right, they're there to make money. If they're there to make money, then let them take the responsibility. That's our responsibility. We're shipping them there. Lanta isn't. We're telling Atlanta to take them there. Simple as that. There's no other, there's no other definition of it. And that's why I think it's a terrible or a highly risky liability for the county. Highly, highly.
The liability we have today is the same liability we're going to have Fourth of July, Saturday, when this bus route is implemented. No more, no less. You know, the liability is there. It exists. That ten-year-old, that nine-year-old who walks over from the camping area to the beach, there's that liability. That's the real liability.
And the parents brought the parent, the kid there. We didn't. That's the difference.
We are not. Public transportation is providing it. Right now, a twelve-year-old can get on the Jim Thorpe trolley and be dropped off at Mock Chunk Lake Park. I haven't heard an argument about, we need to stop that trolley. That trolley is an on-and-off trolley. While it has been moving more towards providing historical tours, it is a jump-on, jump-off trolley. That trolley goes through Mock Chunk Lake Park. Ask the owner, the proprietor, what his age limit is. Right? And ask him if he would drop someone off at Mock Chunk Lake Park. Guess what? We're renting him the space. We're facilitating a liability. Right? That trolley goes through Mock Chunk Lake Park. That is transportation. We're accepting that. So I guess we need to call him in and terminate that contract to reduce that liability also.
Well, I hope he realizes that he does have a great liability if he's doing the same thing that we're doing here.
As does Lanta recognizes, that's why Lanta has coverage for all its bus systems. And I didn't say Lanta was in and making money. They're in to increase the funding to expand services. Commissioner Notstein just mentioned that, the challenges we have. You want expanded services. You want more routes. You want more buses. You want more days of service. You can't do that without federal funding. It's just not viable. The cost would be too high. Right now, a citizen of Carbon County, unbeknownst to probably the majority of them, they can go anywhere in Carbon County that those buses go for a dollar and fifty cents. A dollar and fifty cents. Anywhere in Carbon County along and connecting to all of Lanta's routes. Again, underutilized system. Let's maximize the utilization. Let's maximize the opportunity to promote that. Let's bring down the barriers, the psychological barriers where individuals think it's only the poor senior citizen and senior citizens who should be using public transportation. No, everyone should be comfortable using it. Let's reduce the stigma. This is going to help reduce that stigma, making it available to more individuals on Saturdays, which previously they didn't have this opportunity.
Amy.
Good morning. You talk about IDs for the kids. What happens if they don't have an ID when Lanta requires it? I know the kid carries an ID, especially at twelve or under.
Lanta does not have to put the kid on the bus. But, yeah.
In regards to the Tyler system, when did this system go live?
April seventeen, to the public.
And is it only the title searches and terrorist office that's having problems or is it all the case management system?
It's the portal system in general.
The portal system in general? This was a system that you bought in twenty-twenty-one for six hundred and four thousand eight hundred forty dollars.
At the recommendation of the courts.
Plus it's a hundred thousand dollar service fee every, for the next five years?
At the recommendation of the courts.
You talked about the fact that you guys are going to have a meeting with Tyler to basically tell your problems with it. When do you hope to get that meeting scheduled?
As soon as possible. Yeah, as soon as possible.
If it's affecting the title services and that much, I mean, it's, we do need to get it done as soon as possible. It's about to contact Wesley or the title searchers or when they're available as well as ourselves and Tyler and the courts. It's going to be a problem getting everyone together at the same time and getting Tyler to listen to what the issues are, making sure our title searchers in particular, in this case, he really had their opportunity to explain the problem. And I want to, maybe I better say that for another time or shortcoming of Tyler where who now that one of our employees, you know, fixed the problem. Tyler couldn't for sixty-seven thousand dollars. I believe was rectified the problem in the Register Wells office. They managed to straighten out an issue and Tyler sixty, wanted sixty-seven thousand to do it. So we do have some very good employees that, you know, not too sure about Tyler.
Now, the people that were here, of those, of the title searchers now that were on this side, who is a county employee versus who were just, were they any of, no?
I don't, none of them were county.
Okay, wasn't it?
No, they're just all title searchers that actually, I think more or less, they go into Donna's office mainly, you know, into the recorder. They talk about it to the courts, but it's actually through the recorder deeds.
Probably another four or five that come in on a regular basis, you know, if not more. I mean, we got to provide a county as well, but it's only more reason to have the system up and working that they can do it over the internet as well.
May I have a copy of the proclamation, please? And then in regards to, I have a lot here.
No more busing questions, please. No more busing questions.
No, my question is for Mr. Lukasowicz. You said in your speech that without my presence, the residents would suffer. But yet you refuse to outline your candidate plan, claiming that we'll all know by August first. Why are you hiding behind that since you're claiming transparency?
Because I want to keep my political enemies wondering and questioning. It's part of the overall strategy.
Political enemies, okay. And then I also want to respond to you. Because you take, you say about me not being able to get all sides. However, you are not privileged to my off-the-record discussions with current and former employees who have said you personally make the workplace a hard place to be here due to your controlling manner and your disrespectful attitude. So, that being said, don't question my journalistic. I do try and get as much as I possibly can.
Have them come to me, have them have the personal courage.
That's not my responsibility.
No, it isn't, Amy. But again, I make myself available to everyone. I'm demanding. I ask people to perform, right? And if that upsets them or concerns them, well, that's up to them. I don't know anyone particularly who I interact with on a daily basis and I have authority or responsibility over on a daily basis. Every department head, twenty-one of them, run through the chief administrator, not through me. I don't control their day-to-day activities. You know?
You come at me, I'm coming back at you.
Oh, that's fine. And again, like I said, you or your editors have decided to eliminate important context to a conversation. There is no question about it.
What question? Give me a, the facts right now.
Well, this whole discussion came about in this, I guess, article last night about the contract with the election contractor. Yet you failed to mention the specificity in regards to the shortcomings and deficiencies that brought this to a vote and a decision to terminate that contract.
You said about you wouldn't open a can of worms. Therefore, it wasn't.
And then I read three or four specific instances. Did I not? I did.
Obviously, we disagree.
That's fine. You know?
And why right now are you so, oh, relaxed? This is not you.
I'm always relaxed.
Oh, no, you're not.
I'm confidently passionate, right?
Oh, right now you're a whole different person.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have in general.
Thank you, Amy.
We have internet.